Good morning, good afternoon, from wherever you might be joining us from. My name is Andrew Dow and I'm the CEO of GRV Global. I'm delighted to welcome you all to our first webinar special session for Action on Disaster Relief. Many of you will know that this event has been running successfully for six years. And we're thrilled to be hosting this webinar, which will be chaired by Lieutenant Colonel Anton Gash, former UK Defence Attache to the Caribbean. We are honoured by the presence of many distinguished guests and it's pleasing to see the development of this webinar come to fruition. I personally like to welcome and express thanks to the Government of the Republic of Panama, represented today by Mr Carlos Alberto Rumbo Perez, Director General of SINAPRO Panama. The government of Panama has been a reliable supporter of GRV Global and the ADR programme for many years now. I'd also like to sincerely thank today's panelists from UN OCHA, Net Hope, IFRC, USAID OFDA and the RSS from Barbados, and all public and private sector stakeholders for taking time out of your busy schedules to join us online. Today's webinar will build on the Interagency Workshop Report outcomes of ADR back in February, which was held virtually for the first time. And in doing so, our community ensures that our next event goes on to address the most pertinent issues and therefore seek the most relevant and sustainable solutions. I think it's probably a good time to announce that our seventh annual Action on Disaster Relief Forum will return to Panama in a few months, February 16th and 17th, at Wyndham Allbrook Mall Hotel. This is our first in-person again, in-person event for two years. So we're incredibly excited to be able to meet you all in person once more. Since Covid began back in 2019, GRV has hosted a number of global events through a virtual platform that we've built called NICS. It's got more capabilities than any other virtual platform out there. And I'm happy to discuss tailing it to your own events, board meetings, forums. So after this webinar, let me know if you have any questions. But once again, I mean Anton has mentioned that I'm only allowed three minutes and he's a stickler for timekeeping. So I just wanted a short introduction to thank you all for your contributions and for joining us online here today. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce today's webinar chair, Lieutenant Colonel Anton Gash, former UK Defence Attache to the Caribbean. Anton has been a long time supporter for us in the ADR programme and he co-chaired the Interagency Workshop, which we're going to be discussing here today. So over to you Anton, and very good to see you again.
Thank you very much Andy for those kind words and your introduction for organising this really important event and for allowing me the privilege of chairing today's webinar. I intend to try to be fairly brief in my opening remarks in order to allow the maximum time to hear our superb panelists today. As Andy said, today's event is very much a stepping stone to next year's ADR in Panama, which I certainly encourage you to attend if you can, and as importantly, spread the word about it. Earlier in the year, the virtual ADR, which was held, culminated with the Interagency Workshop, which Andy referred to, which was co-chaired by me and the Executive Director of the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Management Agency, Elizabeth Riley. Many of you will have seen the report. So at the risk of some repetition, I'm going to briefly pick out the main findings of the workshop, because they form the agenda for today's discussion. The workshop picked up five primary themes that we felt merited further work, which related to the need to harness local talent and experience in disaster response, the need for having pre-established links between response agencies, the need to encourage collaboration rather than competition between responders, and the need for more standardisation and commonality, whether that is of terminology, vocabulary or standard operating procedures. And then the need for budgets to take into account preparation, preparedness and resilience rather than response and recovery, where a lot of priorities tend to go. We then identified four secondary themes, which were some very practical ones such as the need to continue to improve our ability to respond to loss of communications, bearing in mind that that is almost inevitably a consequence of major natural disasters. Some thematic ones such as the need to prevent quick fixes, i.e. people's bright ideas in the immediate aftermath of a disaster actually adding to the problem, because they haven't taken into account their impact on long-term recovery. A better capability to manage complex or cascading emergencies. And then finding a way of addressing particularly in the region, the very high cost of transport and logistics. And finally, the workshop asked four questions. These were: how do we enhance our response, in particular civil-military cooperation? And the question was whether some form of UN mandate would be helpful to actually give responders more power, more clout, more legal rights in the same way that a UN peacekeeping operation has. The second was: is there a need for international disaster law? Recognising that although there is plenty of international law already out there, the core ones, particularly international humanitarian law, only applies in a conflict situation. And not all disasters will take place in a conflict environment and therefore the protections of IHL would not apply. Is there a need for a global national centre of disaster, I'm sorry, a global international centre of excellence for disaster management, where doctrine, policy, SOPs and training standards and qualifications might be standardised? And finally, would a regional strategic movement coordination hub be of value for Latin America and the Caribbean? A single focus for knowledge, data, information and a clearinghouse? The panel today will address all of these questions. Not in an attempt to solve them here and now, although that would be wonderful, but to assess whether they really are the right questions today. So before reviewing those questions, each panelist will introduce themselves and will give a perspective on the issues of most concern to them, their organisation and their sector. This is particularly relevant in the aftermath of the experience of Covid and the persisting challenges from the pandemic that lie ahead of us. To what extent has it been a game changer? Has it changed our assumptions? We will take questions at the end, which I encourage you to submit as we go along using the on-screen question process. Please also put in your comments, your ideas, things you agree with, things that you disagree with. We certainly won't be able to address all of your questions and comments during the event today, but I do commit to one thing. We will review them and I will include them in the post-event report, well, the sensible ones. And also any questions which we're not able to answer, the panelists will look at after the event. So the report will actually offer you more than the event itself has. Finally, what we hope to gain from today is a focused and refined agenda for ADR 2022 with themes that can support innovation and product development in the private sector and with service providers, whether they be private sector or public sector, while also helping governments, international organisations, non-governmental organisations and charities to integrate and cooperate better in order to deliver more effective disaster management. That concludes my opening remarks. It now gives me great pleasure to be able to invite our keynote speaker, the Director General of Panama's National Civil Protection System, Mr Carlos Rumbo, to deliver his keynote address. So thank you.
Buenos dias. Robert Alonso, Rogerio Mobilín, Tim Callangan, Kaysha Linton and Robert Móvil. En mi calidad de Director General del Sistema Nacional de Protección Civil de la República de Panamá y en representación de la señora ministra de Gobierno, señora Yanaina Teguanimeen como ofrezco un cordial saludo a esta sección sobre la organización del evento Action on Disaster Relief, que se va a celebrar para el año 2022. El Sistema Nacional de Protección Civil como ente encargado para responder y proteger a la población panameña de los daños ocasionados por desastre desde cualquier origen en sus 39 años de creación es reconocido por su carácter humanitario. El Sistema Nacional de Protección Civil como institución rectora a la reducción de riesgo de desastre sigue impulsando acciones de gobernanza a nivel nacional con el apoyo de aliados regionales. El gobierno del presidente panameño Aurentino Cortizo ha sancionado leyes que van hacia el fortalecimiento de las buenas prácticas de la gestión integral de riesgo de desastre y en la protección de la vida de sus ciudadanos. Panamá tiene la visión de aumentar la resiliencia ante desastre. Para ellos necesitamos más acciones de promoción y capacitación. Y hago un paréntesis para felicitar a las organizaciones y al organizadores de este excelente evento que en definitiva promociona un cambio de actitud y estimulan la participación del sector público, privado, favoreciendo hábitos y costumbres que nos permiten a la construcción y una visión amplia sobre una cultura preventiva. Anualmente en Panamá ofrecemos asistencia humanitaria a unas 15.000 familias por diversas emergencias, siendo la inundación y el oysamiento de tierra las más comunes. Estas realidades nos ofrecen un panorama no muy alentador por los riesgos de desastre. Como países y aliados estratégicos tenemos objetivos desafiantes y el Sistema Nacional de Protección Civil de la República de Panamá, a través de la normativa que le confiere la Constitución y demás instrumentos legales, tiene el propósito de fortalecer la cultura de reducción de riesgo de desastre que incluye la prevención, mitigación y la preparación de la respuesta inmediata con la colaboración de muchos actores dentro y fuera de sus fronteras. El Sistema Nacional de Protección Civil participa en apoyo al Ministerio de Salud en diferentes programas de prevención ante el contagio del Covid-19. Aprovechamos la oportunidad para invitarles del evento presencial que se estará desarrollando en el próximo mes de febrero 2022. Reitero mi agradecimiento a los señores organizadores de esta sección virtual que nos permita fortalecer alianzas con nuevos actores para la reducción de riesgo de desastre en Latinoamérica. Muchas gracias.
Bienvenidos al Centro Logístico Regional de Asistencia Humanitaria, primero y único HOPE de América. En el mundo existen otros tres HOPE, localizados en Colono Purmalasia, Islas Canarias España y el de mayor extensión, la Ciudad Humanitaria de Dubai en Emiratos Árabes Unidos. Llamamos HOPE humanitarios a las áreas logísticas a donde coinciden los Centros de Distribución Humanitarias de la Federación Internacional de la Cruz Roja y Media Luna Roja y el Programa Mundial de Alimentos de las Naciones Unidas. En Panamá se presenta la característica que existe una entidad institucional que brinda apoyo a las operaciones que se realizan desde el HOPE a través del mejoramiento de procesos logísticos y transferencia de conocimiento. Esta plataforma es el Centro Logístico Regional de Asistencia Humanitaria. El Centro Logístico Regional de Asistencia Humanitaria, mejor conocido como HOPE Humanitario, fue creado bajo la Ley 80 del 14 de diciembre del 2017 y es una institución adquita al Ministerio de Gobierno de la República de Panamá como una plataforma logística de asistencia humanitaria cuyo fin es de facilitar las actividades de recepción, manejo, almacenamiento y distribución de insumos y equipos, así como la movilización de recursos, sin perjuicio de cualquier otra actividad afín, para una eficiente gestión de asistencia humanitaria frente a las emergencias nacionales e internacionales. El HOPE Humanitario de Panamá está ubicado en el Área Económica Especial de Panamá Pacífico, con un área total de 6.2 hectáreas, localizado de una forma contigua a la pista Aeropuerto Internacional de Panamá Pacífico y alta conectividad de puertos de cargas más importantes de Panamá y Colón. El Centro Logístico está conformado por una administración y un conjunto de actores denominados usuarios que realizan operaciones logísticas humanitarias de alcance nacional y regional de manera permanente dentro del complejo. Estos usuarios son: el Sistema Nacional de Protección Civil, la Federación Internacional de Cruz Roja y Media Luna Roja y el Depósito de Respuestas Humanitarias de las Naciones Unidas. SINAPRO es el usuario nacional, ente rector facultado para atender y responder a emergencias nacionales provocadas por desastres naturales y antropogénicos. La instancia asegura el eficaz accionar de toda ayuda nacional en asistencia a otros destinos regionales, así como el apoyo internacional que pueda recibir Panamá. Al igual, articula actividades colaborativas con los demás usuarios. El HOPE Humanitario se encuentra en el Centro de Operaciones de Emergencia de SINAPRO, al igual que la Bodega Humanitaria de Panamá. La Federación Internacional de Cruz Roja y Media Luna Roja, usuario internacional, brinda asistencia humanitaria a las poblaciones afectadas por desastres y fortalece activamente la capacidad de sociedades nacionales miembros. Desde el Centro Logístico opera el Departamento de Logística, Compras y Administración de la Cadena de Suministro de la Federación, una de las cuatro sedes de la red global, encargada de brindar soporte logístico a las 35 excursas rojas en las Américas. Por último, el Depósito de Respuestas Humanitarias de las Naciones Unidas, el segundo usuario internacional, es una instancia administrativa para el Programa Mundial de Alimentos de las Naciones Unidas. El Depósito de Respuestas Humanitarias es una red global de HOPE que brinda servicios de compra, almacenamiento y transporte de insumos humanitarios a las agencias de las Naciones Unidas, organismos internacionales, gobiernos y organismos no uguernamentales. Desde el Centro Logístico opera uno de los seis HOPE de las Naciones Unidas ubicado estratégicamente alrededor del mundo.
Director General, thank you very much for your very inspiring opening words and also for visibility of the fascinating humanitarian logistic hub. We're now going to move into our panel discussion. I'm not going to take up valuable time with individually introducing my panelists or giving the details of their incredibly impressive biographies, because you've all had the chance to look at those in the programme and the agenda. But joining me on the virtual stage are Dag from Net Hope, Tim from what I've always called USAID, but I've now been told that in the region I should be calling it USAID, but OFDA, Roger from the International Federation of the Red Cross, Keisha from the East Caribbean Regional Security System and Rogerio from UN OCHA. And thank you all for joining me. We are now going to move into our panel discussion, where initially I'm going to ask each panelist to introduce themselves and give us an overview of what they do, what their main concerns are and the specific challenges that they see as the key ones to be addressed before we then move into the specific thematic questions that I outlined earlier. So I will initially invite Dag from Net Hope to take the floor. Thank you.
Thank you so much Anton. My name is David Stuprignason for Dag, for everyone here. I am Net Hope's Programme Manager for Emergency Preparedness and Response. And I have a background in telecommunications, been where I worked for over 25 years and been a first responder with ISAR here in Iceland, both nationally and internationally, basically since the Cold War. And worked as the Director of ISAR Rescue School for about seven years. So the capacity building and the preparedness is very, very close to my heart. I've been now with Net Hope for about six years and doing all kinds of responses and preparedness work with Net Hope. What is Net Hope, you might ask yourself? Net Hope is actually both an NGO and a member organisation. So we're a little bit split personality. We are a consortium of the world's largest humanitarian development and conservation organisations and the technology sector. So we have over 60 members, member organisations. Organisations like for example IFRC, since we're here, International Rescue Committee, Save the Children World Vision, Oxfam, Doctors Without Borders, Plan International and so on and so on and so on. Those over 60 organisations deliver today over 60% of their non-governmental international aid annually. So we are connecting all of these organisations with the tech industry, basically, where our partners are. So we have 60 plus partners mainly from the tech industry. So organisations like Cisco Systems, Facebook, Google, Microsoft, satellite network operators Dell and so on and so on. Net Hope is also a partner with the Emergency Telecommunications Cluster. So they're also within the UN, we are supporting the technology into the emergency response. So for, we are running a programme which is Emergency Preparedness and Response and we've been doing that now for over 12 years. Been deploying to hurricanes like for example in the Caribbean region, we have Irma and Maria in 2017, Dorian in 2019 and Eta and Iota now in 2020. We have been deploying to earthquakes like for example in Japan, 2011, Nepal 2015 and Suruaisi 2018, migrants and refugee situations. So both the Syrian refugee crisis where we actually install Wi-Fi networks in over 100 camps and as well in the Venezuelan migrant crisis in Colombia, both Colombia Peru and Venezuela, where we actually connected over 107 shelters with free Wi-Fi connectivity. And we ran that for three years. And we are also participating of course in the Covid-19 response, installing networks in Mexico, at the northern border of Mexico and shelters there and in Mahama Camp in Rwanda and Kakuma Camp in Kenya. We do have a rapid response team that is ready to deploy within 24 to 48 hours of highly trained disaster responders. And we focus a lot of our time on preparedness. So during training, we are providing disaster response training with, for both organisations and countries, where we actually had a training a few years ago in Panama, actually. We've also been in Uganda, Philippines, in the US and all over the place. We also pre-precisioned equipment since they were talking about the humanitarian logistics hub. In Panama, we actually, bulk of our stock is actually in that hub, ready to be deployed to a disaster anywhere. So yeah, that's who we are and who I am. Net Hope is a true believer that one plus one actually equals more than two. So when two organisations, two persons' organisation or however, come together to collaborate in partnership, that actually grows much, much more than just one plus one. And that way we can build great ideas and actually perform much, much more than we could. We are also true believers that preparedness is the key. Be ready and what we see is $1 in preparedness equals about $4 in response at the end. So although it's not as sexy to put money into preparedness, unfortunately, those money that get there are actually value higher than others. So I think I'm, yeah, and then the logistics is also a thing that we need to work on in the future getting further. But I'll let that be enough for now. Thank you so much.
Dag, thank you very much. We'll now move straight in and I'll invite Tim from USAID OFDA for about three minutes if possible, Tim. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Good morning Anton, good morning panelists. Great to see everybody. And Anton, let me start off, you called it USAID, it's correct. I work again, my name is Tim Callahan, I work for USAID, but I work for what used to be OFDA, the Office of Foreign Disaster Assistance, but we merged with our sister office Food for Peace and we're now the Bureau for Humanitarian Assistance. I've been with, the Regional Office for Latin America and the Caribbean is based in Costa Rica. I've been there over 20 years, I'm the Regional Director. And we cover all countries, from Argentina to the islands in the Caribbean. Our mandate is disaster response when a country makes a request for collaboration with the United States Government. We're the lead federal agency for the US Government. You know, as we just heard from Dag, a lot of what we do and have done for many years is really what we also believe is very important, is everything beforehand. Whether you want to call it preparedness, whether you want to call it disaster mitigation or disaster risk reduction, the investments with the governments ahead of time is critical. Our counterpart in a country is the national system. So whether it's AdPem in Jamaica, whether it's Copeco in Honduras, those are our counterparts. You know, we listen to them for their vision on disaster preparedness mitigation, risk reduction, look at ways we can invest. We have over 23 training courses in Incident Command System, Urban Search and Rescue. We believe strongly in the capacity building. We have local consultants who are host nationals from every country in every country. So we have Audrey Mullins in Jamaica, we have Fernando Pulgarum in Costa Rica. And these folks again work with the national systems for response, because that is our mandate if a country makes a request. We have over 400 individuals on a search roster who help us in a response. And I am very proud that there's no North Americans on that list, it's all people from the countries. So I was the disaster team lead for the US Government for the recent Haiti earthquake. We activated 10 Haitians as part of our team that afternoon on August 14th. Again, who live in the communities, who speak Creole, who speak French, who know the communities and know the issues. For us, the partnerships are critical. You know, there's a lot of issues going on in Latin America and the Caribbean right now, food insecurity, protection issues, security that worry us a lot. I think the local support for us, capacity building at the local level is critical. Working with the governments obviously is critical. And our partnerships are vast, right, as I stated. So when I say national system, it's the national system, but we also work with the local firefighters, the local Red Cross to build capacity. We also work with non-government organisations, both as Dag said in preparedness efforts but also in response efforts. We work closely, as Rogerio knows, with our UN friends and colleagues. We work very closely with UNICEF, we work very closely with OCHA, the World Food Programme, both in food security or food insecurity, but also for us logistics has been critical, especially in the Caribbean, especially with so many storms the last couple of years. So we work very closely with the World Food Programme in Barbados to provide capacity building throughout the region for logistics. And we also work very closely with regional groups such as Supremo Danak in Central America and SADIMA. So again, our mandate is disaster response in collaboration when a government makes a request to our ambassador. But the preparedness mitigation, risk reduction is more critical in my opinion than ever, given Covid-19. I look forward to when we can have in-face discussions, opportunities to look at these key issues on security issues in the region, impacts from Covid, protection-related issues, the migration issues. We have a very large programme supporting the Venezuelan migrants in five different countries. So again, I look forward to this discussion. But capacity building, working together, in my opinion, especially given the pandemic, has been more critical than ever. Thank you.
Tim, thank you very much. If I can now invite Roger from IFRC to make his opening comments.
Good morning everyone and thanks for inviting me into this panel. And my role is the head of the Disaster Climate and Crisis Prevention and Recovery. It's quite a long name, but basically what it tries to capture is all the areas related, is the before, during and after, and that's the DNA of the Red Cross. Here in the Regional Office, we support around 35 national societies in the region and that's true, continues. And that's through continuous monitoring and coordination with the disaster management coordinators in the national societies, the heads of the sub-delegations. And we try to revise all these emergency roles and responsibilities, disseminate the contingency plans, and while we are at this point addressing the COVID nineteen considerations. This at least is updated once a year, where we have a, a big hurricane conference, where we do, let's say, we do the homework in, in advance with the national societies, and we present that kind of a trigger. But it's, it's a constant work with those national societies. Right now, through still responding and recovering from disasters like Eta Yota or San Benito de Gravíns or eighty, eighty hurricane, we are still responding to the COVID nineteen pandemic, which has had a huge impact also in this kind of emergency responses in terms of logistics. If we want to keep the business continuity plans, if we want to keep our people healthy, it requires us to have more people in the cars, more social distance. It has been a, a kind of a scale up on those kind of measures. And what we really focus, what really becomes our priority is to work basically in climate adaptation, risk reduction, and movements of population around these emergency responses also, and the COVID pandemic response. If we have a, a major disaster, we have global capacities. But with the hundred and ninety-two national societies, those are what we call the global tools that can easily top up the local capacities. And more and more, that's where we try to localize. Right now, we have a disaster relief emergency fund, a ref activated for, for responding to the floods with the Panamanian and Red Cross in Boca del Toro. And that's led by someone from the region. We have responses in Honduras, in Costa Rica, in several places. This is with disaster relief emergency funds. That's money that is channeled and implemented by the national societies of the region. And if we have to support with search staff, we try as much as possible that this search staff comes from the region. On top, that's something that we've been pioneers with America region and other regions from the, from the A F R C are following. What we have is a, is a program called Women Leadership Program. I would say, unfortunately, and, and I confirm that, I was leading the response in Bahamas or in, in Honduras. This is a world where a lot of emergency operations leads are middle-aged men like me. And we have right now a program with fifteen women from the region that are going to be deployed more and more. It's not just about training, it's about leading the operation through a mentoring so that we can start reverting that, that, that proportion that we have right now in the, in the emergency response. We have eight hundred thousand volunteers in Americas. Most of them are trained locally, but also as national intervention teams, as rapid response, damage assessment, and needs analysis teams. And they can interchange in a regional way, and obviously can do their response in a local way. And we were talking before about the hub. Obviously, the main hub is in Panama. But again, to be more efficient, we have soup hubs, and we have a soup hub in General Tobago. We have another one in Dominican Republic. Most recently, we are opening one in Argentina. And, and that means that we can be a little bit faster on the response. We are closer to, to the other areas in the, in the region. The Mediterranean hub more or less covers at least up to seven thousand five hundred families simultaneously for two emergencies. That's, that's the minimum capacity we try always to have, to have in place and maintain. We also have our regional reference centers in Americas, Crep and Kadrim, that provide support, investigate, systematize, harmonize, and offer projects and services to, to the local, to the regional levels. With innovative, innovative strategies, those centers of reference are, are all developed and sustained by local, local people from Caribbean and from Central America mainly, that, that support on that preparedness on a daily basis. And that's, that's a daily engagement with the national societies in, in the region. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Roger. We now, we, we have now eaten up our sort of slack time that we had, that we had gained at, at the start. I wish we had more time, because this is all fascinating, and each individual could speak for, for probably half an hour. But we, we was trying not to, not to drift too much off our agenda. And Keisha, from the Regional Security System in the East Caribbean, I, I know what a superb timekeeper and administrator you are as well. So over to you, please.
Thank you very much for that, Anton. Good morning, everyone. I'm Keisha Linton, and I am the Disaster Management and Humanitarian Assistance Officer at the Regional Security System. And we're a treaty-based organization, and we have seven of the eastern Caribbean countries under our remit. But being part of the Caribbean, we should be respond if any of the, and member states within the Caribbean are impacted. And that goes from as far as Jamaica all the way down to Diana, Sierra, as they were all part of the Sadima regional R and Regional Response Mechanism. And like everyone else, COVID has had a significant impact on the way we execute our duties. We've had to rethink and reshape what our deployment troops and protocols look like. And I say this, especially coming from the background of the region having already limited strategic air and sealage to get our troops into theater. And this is one of our biggest challenges. How do we get our trained personnel into the impacted area in a reasonable amount of time to render the appropriate assistance? But not only get it into theater, but working within the bubble of COVID. How do we get them there and keep them safe while they're there? We've had to, so as it relates to COVID, we've had to prioritize the health and safety of our response personnel, and we've had to update some of our SOPs, especially as it relates to accommodation and personal protective equipment. But as you guys know, in the tropics, COVID is not our only concern. Earlier this year, we've already had to deal with a Dengue fever outbreak in St. Vincent and the Grenadines. And then on top of that, we've also had, as you guys have already mentioned, we've had to respond to the eruption of the Lhasa Fre volcano in St. Vincent. So within our limited, our Caribbean context, we're all working within these, within these many, 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 many issues that compound our deployments, and how do we effectively and efficiently do that? So, but despite some of these challenges, I'm just trying to rush on, despite some of these challenges, successful deployments has come as a result of what we're doing here, this inter-agency collaboration and cooperation. So as a result of this, we've not only been able to mount an effective, effective and efficient response. So we are here to, the best things we can do are one of our, our challenge is getting into theater. But we're going to capitalize on our inter-agency response and collaboration to effectively execute the needs of our region. How did I do, Anton?
Perfect, Keisha. Thank you so much. We're, we're, we're right back on track. Roggerio, if, from U N OCHA, if I can ask you to make your opening remarks, please.
Yes, here we go. Let's try to reach the three minutes. Being the last, after such a great speaker speaking ahead of me, I think I'm going to bring some key numbers and, and show why OCHA is concerned and working hard with some of you here, in fact, all of you. I met somehow in many meetings or trainings or sessions. We are in a region that everybody knows, but I'll give you some numbers just to put us in the shape. Eighty-three million people in need of assistance in Northern Central America. One point seven million people just recently, over the past twelve months, reaching the south border of U S. That is more than twenty nineteen and twenty, although we have the pandemic and not much movement together. Twenty percent of population in this region of the global population is affected by COVID, and thirty percent of deaths. Despite the fact that we have only, we contribute only with ninety percent of the population of the world. In a region where a lot of countries, to not say the majority, are uninformed economies. And when I say uninformed economy, I mean forty, fifty, six, up to almost nine percent of uninformed economies facing COVID. So these people really has tremendous, they struggle a lot to, to have their life, economical life in track. One point two million in the South Colony, Grand Chaco, only in potential risk of food insecurity. Plus, three hundred million people, according to certain U N organizations. We, with food insecurity, and Tim mentioned, well, and all colleagues also mentioned other aspects in a region with earthquakes, hurricanes, floods, much light, it's not a challenge. I'm not, I'm not trying to say this is the Dante Fed, no, or one of the circles, but definitely is a region that concerns us, because we have a lack of funding, so now we're humanitarian attention. We are always struggling to get more funds. We are working hard on preparedness, working hard to put people together, create a standardized system. Dag mentioned this very well. Preparedness, readiness, whatever you want, we need to work together. But you're together, we need to train together, we need to simulate things together. Otherwise, we are just waiting for the impact to try to be there and do our thing. So OCHA is concerned, that's why OCHA work a lot with the civil protection, the U N countries, donor community. This is one great button, that one of the largest donors for OCHA. So we always working together around this. We have the anticipatory funding now, anticipatory finance, as we want to say. We are developing new modalities like cash initiatives. We must use the local organizations. And to have all of this together, OCHA is engaging more with private sector, engaging more with local organizations, trying to explore cash initiatives, trying to push more local donors. We know that the countries here facing economical, economical problems. But we are bringing the South-South cooperation, knowing that the whole world was affected by the pandemic and not in a very well situation. But we want to try to bring new aspects for the global operation and private sector, since we are on this event, and next year we're going to return to private, to localized events, present your events. I think private sector, I really do believe, and we have some connecting business initiatives, trying to bring those actors together, either to bring extra human resource, extra fund, expertise, or whatever they can offer to improve this assistance. And I think I got four minutes, so. Anton, that's the main concerns of OCHA, that's what he's been paying attention with all of colleagues presenting here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roggerio. No, we're, we're happily on track. And I think that has set up a view of the breadth of panelists who we have today, the sectors and the areas that, that they cover, and also the areas of different concern. Although it's also fascinating how many of them overlap. The first question, which I'm going to put to Keisha, is, is very relevant to what several people have mentioned there. And the question is, how do we better integrate local needs, perceptions, and expertise into disaster response? And Keisha, I'll add on to that question from Ricardo Targa in the audience, who has further said, how, how do we identify, ensure that we identify and exploit local talent, especially entrepreneurs? Over to you. Thank you.
Hey, good morning. I'm here. One, the first thing we can do, when, especially when international agencies are going in, is to understand the culture of the country into which you're deploying. And that can be done by both Tim and Roger spoke about it earlier, volunteers. You get people from the local communities to work with you, to work with the international agencies and the local agencies. And hope that can be done is through, we said it again, capacity building. We could go in and we train the volunteers. I'm sure some of you, all of us here have heard of the SERC program, the Community Emergency Response Teams Training. That is an excellent, excellent way to not only build capacity, but to have resources within the communities on whom you can call and who you know that can work inside the communities in the immediate aftermath of an emergency. Who there, they're specially trained, they have all the equipment and knowledge, and they can get their communities to an agreeable sense after disaster, where, after which, local and international aid can come in. And they already know within a particular community, who are the individuals that they can reach out to to get an idea of the, of exactly what has happened within the, within the community. You know, they're, they're trained, they have a register, they know who are vulnerable. They know who else within the community can be able to assist, not only because of being trained, but maybe because somebody works in construction. So you know this person here always has saws, this person here has a ladder, can help within the community. So that, that, that's just, that's just me, and that's the, the direction I think that we're continuing to try to go, training people within the communities, having our emergency response team, and allowing international agencies and trainers to come into areas and build capacity within some of these local communities. Over.
Keisha, thank you very much indeed. I'll move straight on to the next question, which is to Roggerio from OCHA. And for Roggerio, the question is, how can we create pre-established relationships and links between response agencies?
Working at country level, Anton. And in fact, just to mention one simple example in many. OCHA Regional Office, the one that I'm directing, and you know, many of our colleagues are covering twenty-two countries with the resident coordinators from the U N. So it's our main interest, plus the Caribbean member states or participant states. But the one example, just before joining this meeting, we are presenting to Bahamas. That is an exercise that started during Dorian's response, the famous, we call three W. Now we are talking about three, four, five W. I remember how we struggled back then in two thousand nineteen when we were there. And now there is a lot of interest in many countries to work and register and tracking the work with local partners, plus the international organizations. So as OCHA, we are trying to promote the standardization of one mapping to that could be used in any country, because it's free of charge, it's open source, and people can use and help us to make the two even better. When we engage with these humanitarian circles, or humanitarian country teams, or humanitarian networks of patterns, when more people join to these networks, better for us, because we start talking similar language, we start to understand how the program cycle could be. Maybe there is a different program cycles according to our mandates and specifications. But when we bring together and harmonize those circles, those cycles, it's better for all of us, and it's better for the beneficiaries, because we can provide a more efficient and coherent assistance. So I think the, the localization, work with volunteers, with local NGOs, reliable patterns based on principles. More we engage with them, plus the private sector, I repeat, it's an important actor these days. We must use them and bring them to the coordination environment, not only going to parallel what is good as well. Since the people is in need, of course, everybody should go and provide their help and their assistance according to their capacities. But the more we coordinate, more we identify the gaps and cover the gaps, better for us. We spend less resource and so we tackle the most urgent needs. I think that's around this way of coordination is the strongest part from OCHA. And from all of us here, as I said, we met all of you, or at least I met in a lot of events, responses, and training, and more we talk about, better we are as a group, collective effort. That's the, the answer.
Thank you very much, Roger. That, that was fascinating. And I'm going to move to almost the other side of the same coin in my question to Roger from I F R C, which is, how do we stop the bad side of interagency cooperation? So how do we promote collaboration and not competition between respondents? Your thoughts on that, please, Roger?
Thanks. It's, that's something we, we have gone internally, using the Red Cross also, because we have different, different barriers. And it's about trust. It's about creating a relation where we value the best place for each kind of response, which is not always easy. And I, I really love what Keisha was saying. I mean, I was quite often the only non-Bahamian in, in Bahamas coordination meetings. I would have been completely useless if I was not sitting next to the Director General of the Bahamas Red Cross, because I would have not understood quick enough what was happening in there. So it's important to So it's important to, to create that trust, to understand who is the best place for, for each response and then be able to communicate all that. I know there with Rogério, and that's probably gonna sound almost anecdotal, but every time there's a disaster or we see a hurricane arriving, we call each other, we call Darío. Hey, what are you gonna be doing? How are we gonna be working on that response? It happens similarly. I mean, the colleagues from, from USAID, they are brilliant because they support directly the national societies in country through, through grants at local level. And what we try is then to plan beyond just the grant, but plan based on the needs that are identified at field level and then see who is the best place to tackle those needs. If that's, if that's an interagency, if that's a government, if that's a local community with their own mechanism, how we can build over those capacities? So at the end, yeah, it's, it's about trust, it's about ownership, it's about understanding who is the best place and recognizing that. Because too often and we see that, especially in the Caribbean, it's challenging when we go with global tools and we have a Red Cross with 15 staff and it's normal, it's a population, then we land there 60 people. We really need to make an effort, stepping back, listening and adjusting and being supporters and not, and not thieves of the protagonists of the, of the operation. So it's about that more, plus creating that link, understanding who's the best place and supporting in the, in the, in the right way. And yet, there's systems of communication are crucial and I know OCHA really makes a huge effort on trying to put this and setups all together in the same, in the same level of communication. Kept it to three minutes.
Thank you so much. And I'm now going back to Rogério, who's, who's really, really earning his supper today. But I think this is particularly bearing in mind how Roger has just described the importance of OCHA's central sort of oversight role. Question is, how do we achieve more standardization and commonality between responders? You've already talked about the shared mapping tool, but what, what other things could and should we be doing?
Respecting other mandates, first one. So we recognize that everyone here as an organization, as individual working for an organization, have their, our mandates and our own interests as well. So respecting the differences is one important aspect of OCHA. The second one is not imposing, but it's more about proposing. Proposing solutions to the collective response. If more people can join our proposed joint solutions, better for the group. And we have initiatives, as I said, I think this is one. Imagine back in 2016, when they started in Panama, bringing private sector together. Now became manually and now here we are all together talking about the same thing and making a great event. A lot of forums and trainings about international policies. I think there are certain arrogance sometimes from, from us in the international community when we want and desire to propose a certain tool and standards and we go with a strong impact in others and they reject us. And I think the little change, and it's not only a linguistic fancy way of talking. It's really about find a way to propose things and stop imposing things on people because they need to know first. Think of one thing, if us on our own teams have difficult to agreed in one, two and one way of working, how can you think that you go to one training outside, talk to people and they want to align with you? It's not possible. You're human beings. We are having our mandates and we are working with a complex environment. It's chaotic. It's, there is destruction, there is pain, there is humanity there. So it's a long-term run. That's why regional offices like ours and IFRC's have a lot of, of work to do. It's a continuum improving solutions. It better than change year by year. Sometimes some of the solution we decided we move to remove, but let's use technology. Let's use the human skills. Let's use and capitalize on the local talent to, to also to again bring in team message, bring the talent. We don't know their, the local, their ancestral knowledge, respect them. Bring them to understand our international policy, why we are doing things, or why we are supporting, what is our mandate and accommodate them. And there are few tools we are using there. I mentioned one, three, four, five W. It gained momentum in the pandemic because everybody was around it, solving the solution, the pandemic. So we are lucky in this sense, we had to start the new version. It was my 10th development version of this tool. And in Bahamas, we start a new one using new technology. When we, we, in the pandemic, it just boosts the tool. Now more people are interested on it. Our response plans team was, BHA was pushing OCHA, proposing OCHA to release another standardization, the humanitarian response plus. Now we have the plan, people is aware about the funding mechanism, supporting the same tools. I think sometimes it takes longer than we expect, but there are few elements there that can give us some hope that we are in the right path. In the path, we leave something behind. We bring new technology according to the new context. We bring more partners engaging on this route and that's what we need. The world is not an easy place to, to live and to propose solutions. Over to you.
Thank you, Rogério. I thought that was particularly clear. And your, your point about proposing, not imposing is absolutely right. And it ties into Keisha's theme about the local engagement. Because the cliche that we all know is doing things to people rather than doing them with people. And I think you've captured that extremely well. Tim, I do apologize because like everybody else, I'm coming to the US to help me with my budget problems, which I, which I feel a little, a little guilty about. But, but the question for you is, going back to a point that a couple of panelists have made, that response is, is sexy. And politicians like response because they get, they get TV time, they get media coverage. So how do we encourage budgeting just as much for preparedness and for resilience as well as for response and recovery?
I think the key is always to tell our story. I couldn't agree more with just how this discussion is going about, you know, the, our, our role. And we always have to listen, right? We want to be able to listen to countries, but getting back to your, your, so again, that's why for us, the capacity part, capacity building, using our local search capacity staff, they're all, they're not Americans, they're all people from the countries. Our consultants who build the capacity work with the Red Cross, they're all local folks. But to answer your question, I think it's to tell our story. And I do tell a story and I've told this in the United States over and over. You know, we, the United States has two urban search and rescue teams that are certified by the United Nations, one in LA County, one in Fairfax County. They both responded to the Haiti earthquake 11 years ago. LA responded to Mexico, you know, at the request of the governments. But my, my greatest happiness with working with these teams, because we've worked a lot with the, the local urban search and rescue teams in all the countries for many, many years. 2016, earthquake on the coast in Ecuador, the US teams were not needed. Seventy, so all the teams from the region collaborated with the government of Ecuador for urban search and rescue. Seventy-five percent of those teams were trained by USAID. And I get that message out because again, that's what we want. We don't want to have to go in it. For me, my, my greatest joy is when, you know, a country says, Tim, thanks so much for the call, but we're good. We built our capacity incident command system. We built our capacity in urban search and rescue. We're working with the private sector and universities. And so, but, but again, I, that to me, so getting the message out, obviously in the United States, telling our story, story early and often is, is critical. I think we've built working with, that's why I say, when I say, we're working with national systems. You know, I'm listening to the vision that Adem has in Jamaica. We're listening to the, you know, Conrad in Guatemala. I mean, it's, it's their country. We're listening and looking at how do we put our resources in. But for me, you're right. There's no question about it. And it's not just that it's sexy, Anton, it's that in the world right now, there are so many humanitarian needs and response, hands down, right? Afghanistan, South Sudan, I could go on, the Venezuela regional crisis. So I think we have to be able to articulate the investment that we're all making together. I'm looking at you, Rogério, right now. We have to, we have to continue to tell that story on how important that investment is. And in my opinion, the more we do that, and there's no doubt budgets are being stretched right now because there's so many responses worldwide. But I have spent my career 20 years in Costa Rica and I've seen that investment, working with governments, working with partners like the, the Red Cross, the Federation and the local chapters and Rogério with the UN system, that it pays off. But we have to work together, but we really have to tell our story to people who make decision, hard choices on budgets worldwide. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And I, I think that has, has put it particularly well. I think there is also the advantage, from a selfish point of view, that the better we can make the local capability, the less we have to do. Which, which is, you know, obviously it's attractive for two reasons, faster response locally, but, but also in, in, in terms of the impact on national budgets. I will go to the next question, which is to Dag. Dag noting that we are about seven minutes behind schedule, which is, which is, which is good because I can find seven minutes. So I can't find much more than seven minutes. So yes, people are now really good. We're, we're hitting three minutes pretty regularly. So if everybody can continue with that. So for Dag, a very practical question and one absolutely focused on your core activity. How can we better plan for communications failure, given that it is almost inevitable in many of the disasters we encounter?
The three words, prepare, prepare and prepare. That's it. But I think that, that's the key thing here. We have to acknowledge that the first responders are the local people. The first responders are not the US USR team or, or the natural tech team coming from all around the world. People on the ground are those that are most important. So what we need to do is we need to prepare them. We need to help them build up resilience and, and, and basically by capacity building. And we have to work with organizations that are already working on the ground. Like natural, we, we work with our members that are already on the ground. We, we support them and, and through them, we provide services. So I, I, I think that, that's a key, key thing here. For NGOs and responders, I, I say plan, 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 plan. So have an emergency IT plan, for example, on how to respond. Do capacity building. Support your IT team to be able to go out into the field and build up new connectivity in, in new areas where there is no connectivity at all. Coordinate with other NGOs, hugely important. Don't, don't sit in your own bubble and think that you can do everything. The answer can be just around the wall in, in the next NGO, basically. So talk to one another. Pre-positioning your equipment. It's too late to order the sat phone when the emergency has happened. You have to have it. You have to, it has to be ready. You have to know how it works. And, 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 and the battery has to be charged, not just stored somewhere in the top shelf. So be prepared. That's the key thing. And then exercise, train what you, what, what you, or exercise what you train, sorry. So, so that, that you know how to actually do it in the field. For the governments, again, planning, 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 have an emergency telecommunications plan or national emergency telecommunications plan and exercise that plan. Don't just have it a book into, in, in a shelf somewhere. It has to be exercised. Do capacity building, support organizations that are doing capacity building in your country. That's very important. Coordinate, the key thing here as for us, from the, from the telecommunications and technology, that has to be a part of the, basically the emergency management center or emergency management organization. They have to have a seat there so that that's been part of the planning from, from the beginning. And there has to be some redundancy, connections and things like that, just, yeah, both in, in, in connections into the country and as well for the core network and things like that. For the ISPs and MNOs, again, it's the same. I, I, I sound like a broken record. Plan, 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 plan. Have a, follow the national emergency telecommunications plan. Know your role and act, do what you're supposed to do, basically. Build capacity. You have people that are very, very good technology wise, but have they ever been in a disaster affected area? So that they know that you actually, how you actually, you know, work it in, in areas where you don't have all the tools that, that you usually have. Think out of the box and things like that. And equipment availability. Today we have just-in-time methodology in, 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 in supply chain, which means that you don't have a stock. You get your spare parts just in time. You get them when you need them and you're not stocking up on cables or, on, on equipment or anything like that. This means when disaster strikes, you don't have anything to, to work with. You don't have any spare parts. You don't have any extra cables and things like that. That, that's actually something that you have to plan for. You have to have that. You have to have, build up a stock so that you can be self-sufficient in a way. Or at least have LTAs or, or, or agreements with vendors that you can get it very, very quickly. And, and to be frank, or to be honest, getting it very quickly between countries, we might be talking about weeks today with, with, with shipping and things like that. So that's not enough. So, so I think that these are clear things that we have to, have to think about. Coordination needs to start before the emergency. And, and the, the NGO or the ISPs and MNOs have to work together. This is not something that they can isolate themselves and, and think that they can build their system so that their system will work and not the next system. Open up all of the networks so that everybody can call and not, but only those that are yours subscribers. So things, things like that. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think that's my three minutes for now. I can go on, but yeah.
Thank you, Dag. Further comments I will incorporate in, in the report. There's a lot to say there. And it, it is a vital thing. I mean, in, in 2019, Cayman Islands deployed their police helicopter to, to Nassau. And they then very kindly allowed me to take on the tasking of the, of the helicopter after it had first arrived, which is very gracious of them. The first task we carried out was lifting the World Food Program's satellite communications forward to, to Abaco because it was a sense of prioritization. However, I must not eat into the, the valuable three minutes. Tim, we're back to you, please, with a pretty strategic question, which will be a real challenge for you in three minutes. How do we better prepare for complex or cascading emergencies rather than the single event which we are probably more comfortable handling?
Yeah, I think again, it's, it's, it's the, you know, for me, it's all about relationships. It's all about knowing within the countries who will manage both sudden onset and complex situations. We've learned a lot in, at Costa Rica in the last couple of years, just with the Venezuela regional crisis. We had not worked with a large migrant issue like that. One of the things I've learned is to really have a better understanding in every country. Who might, I mean, again, for the sudden onset, it's pretty clear. But having close and continued communication coordination with governments and governments change. So that means we constantly have those conversations ongoing with our embassies and so forth. Who would we coordinate with and collaborate with if a new complex situation arose? With the Venezuelan migrant, migrant situation, for example, in Colombia, three or four years ago, as Rogério knows. Normally we would work with UNGRD, but they were not working that issue from the government of Colombia. So I think for us, as first responders and as, as groups coordinate, it's really kind of trying to understand who key actors are in a country as things shift, especially if it's a complex emergency sort of situation. I think that's probably the biggest lesson we've learned. And obviously we're, we're looking at that situation now for Central America as well. But, but for the Venezuela regional crisis, no doubt. Look, that issue for us was something that we now is kind of in our strategic plans as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tim. Yes. And, and I, again, I fully agree. Sometimes there is reluctance to declare an emergency early enough, whether it be for political reasons or economic reasons or, or, or whatever. whether it be for political reasons or economic reasons or whatever. However, moving directly on. Roger, if I can ask you to consider, bearing in mind what I said before about the constraints on international humanitarian law and where it applies. Do we need international disaster law to be created and embedded in order to better protect the victims of disasters? Do we need to consider a system of UN mandates as we have for peacekeeping to provide more power for responders?
Well, yeah, disaster noise is a key pillar to achieve greater climate resilience and the international commitments under Paris agreements and I for the United Nations Agenda for Sustainable Development are there. Through resolutions, a lot that the International Conference of the Red Cross and Red Quest since 2017, we have received that mandate from state parties to the Geneva Convention to pioneer the development of disaster law and council governments in adopting kind of state-of-the-art climate smart disaster law. Based on the mandate, the primary global mediator, the AFRC, has a history of informing, influencing the legal thinking of disaster risk management. And what we have is for like evidence-based recommendation that sense. So what is the facilitation of entry of eligible international disaster relief? So one of the things we find again and again is that we have non-solicited goods. We send things that the people is not requesting. So how we articulate that properly? And those relief goods that are needed that go through the border of Sicily. And the other one is enabling a right environment for disaster risk reduction and climate change adaptation. Also for domestic disaster response and preparedness. And that's something that it has to be legislated and it is important to have it as a ground base. And also for public health emergencies, preparedness and response. So at the end, these are kind of the four main topics that we see as an evidence. Countries where that happened, I mean, I was extremely lucky to witness myself and the IDR department is part of my unit, is part of my team. And when I arrived to Honduras, it was assigned few, one week before Eta Yota happened. The international disaster risk law there, and that facilitated enormously the entry of goods in country. And that has been a fantastic trigger to other countries to request that kind of support or guidance. And we have several experiences in the region. So we do have a mandate, yes, as the Red Cross and definitely has to be more and more extrapolated to the countries. And that's the role of auxiliary of the Red Cross in country because it really makes a difference. And it's not just like a very tangible, immediate thing like the relief, but also how we do preparedness and disaster risk reduction and climate change adaptation. Where we have experiences in probably in other regions where it's even regulated by law that the provincial, local governments, they have to put money to do actions, clear actions for risk mitigation. And that has to be endorsed by law if we want to make it happen.
Roger, thank you. That was very clear. And one thing I think we can agree on is that it's very reassuring that the International Committee and the International Federation of your organization and societies are actually on the case. Because, you know, when you get on a case, you are dogged and it gets done. So I find it particularly reassuring that it is a very clear mandate to take this forward. Dag, very tight for time, but can I ask you to give us a brief view on whether there is a need for a global center of excellence in the field of disaster management for all the reasons that I outlined in my introduction?
Yeah, no, definitely. The short answer is of course, yes. Some kind of agreed upon way of doing things so that we can work together as a whole, as one entity, supporting one another and knowing what everyone is doing and things like that. Have clear SOPs on standard operational procedures that are agreed upon and things like that. That this will always help, definitely, a hundred percent. But that said, can one organization or one entity focus on all of these things at the same time? The UN has, and OCHA has a very, very good way of breaking it down, basically in an emergency with the UN cluster system, for example, where some organizations are focusing on the coordination of one thing at a time, basically. So you have one organization, you have WFP, for example, with the images telecommunications cluster. You have, for example, two organizations, UNICEF and Save the Children with education. So organizations that are strong in those areas should of course lead that. But building a dome for everything and having that controlled by one entity, I think can be a bit of a big bite to chunk off. Instead of focusing on where organizations are strong. Yeah, that's my first view. And I for sure don't want to talk this down because I think in what, this comes to basically how this will be run, how this will be done. Because I think it's important. I think it's hugely important. So, yeah.
Thank you, Dag. I'll jump in purely because of time. But it occurs to me, I said I would ask you to feed thoughts into me after the event. I suspect everybody, both panelists and audience, has a view on this. If people could feed me some thoughts on exactly that, you know, what would it cover? The subject areas, would it be distributed decentralized as Dag has proposed? Budget, authority, et cetera, et cetera. And Keisha, before I move on to your question, I'm actually going to throw in a question from the floor because we don't have a great deal of time left. But it relates to this last one and it's from Ricardo Targa, who asked a very straightforward question. Where can, you know, he or organizations get standards and common SOPs and certification? So it's almost asking, there is a demand out there for what we've just been discussing. But it's a simple question. Where do people look for it at the moment? And I don't know whether Dag would take that or whether anybody else would want to respond on that.
One thing, this is Tim, one thing I'll say in my 20-plus years in Costa Rica, that I do appreciate. When you look at urban search and rescue after an earthquake, the UN has worked very hard with INSURAC, which is the International Search and Rescue Advisory Group, to have standards. I've seen that work. I've seen groups show up when they're not, don't meet those standards and it's not good. I've seen the standards work. I will also applaud PAHO. They've worked very hard with the countries to put the emergency medical teams together, kind of, I think, to take a lot of what INSURAC did. I have seen those two pieces with standards, countries know what to expect. If these teams are, you know, allowed to come in, because whether it's PAHO or INSURAC, they've said they've met a certain standard, this is what you can expect. So I've seen great improvement on that. And I think countries need that and deserve that. Because you don't want just anybody coming in. You want to know if somebody from the outside is going to come in, they've met a certain level, whether it's medical or getting, going into a building to save people's lives, that they can work with the local teams and what have. Thank you.
No, definitely. And I want to mirror that as well. And being a former team leader for an INSURAC team, I definitely can second that, how important that is. And there has to be some standardization so that people know what's coming. We don't need disastrosity. We know that it exists. And we know that in a disaster, we get all kinds of people well willing. They want to help. They want to do well. But unfortunately, they are not, they don't have the right equipment. They don't have the right knowledge and they actually become a burden on the response. And that's very, very important that that doesn't happen.
Anton, if I can have one more second on that, because I believe the countries have a right to be able to say yes or no if a certain team comes in, because it's their country. So if they don't think, as Dag just said, a lot of people have well intentioned, but it doesn't mean they've met a certain level that I think the world expects to help a country. And I believe countries have a right to say, you know, if you're four guys, you may be well intentioned, but if you haven't met a certain level for urban search and rescue, a country should have the right to say no. Thank you.
Absolutely. And it goes back to that core point, doing things with people rather than to them, as we discussed before. We are very close to being out of time. I have one more audience question that I'd like to address. There are a couple that we really don't have time to take on. And Sergio was asking for an update on the situation in Haiti. I think we would need a very long webinar to be able to do that, to do that justice. And Dag, I think you've largely covered this, but excuse me, I'm not sure whether it's Miranda Cheyenne or Cheyenne Miranda, but has asked for views on how technology is being used to help collaboration, information sharing and visibility and coordination. I feel we've covered that fairly satisfactorily with the comments about shared mapping tools and what you've said already, but literally in a minute, is there anything you could add on that, Dag?
Yeah, definitely. So today, communications and collaboration is done with technology. It's done with emails. It's done with Slack. It's done with telephone. So you're calling one another. So it's hugely important. And to be frank, I think it's getting almost as important as food and water. Not only for the people on the ground, but for the coordination. So that the coordination, so that we can deliver the right amount of waters to that place and that amount of food to the next place and that amount of medical supplies to that place. Yeah, I think I like that be it.
Thank you very much. The final question that we will take is for Keisha, which is that question about whether there is a place or a need for a regional strategic movement coordination hub, a sort of center of excellence where all strategic movements can be efficiently managed. But I'll also ask you, Keisha, just to consider another part of the question from Ricardo Targa, which is, you know, what is the answer if local supplies or stores, you know, pre-positioned stuff is actually destroyed by the hurricane or the earthquake? So that having it pre-positioned is actually not such a great idea? Or when local capability has collapsed? And I know that is particularly a SEDIMA focus, which was your previous existence. Thank you.
Well, the short answer to that, I could say is yes. There's always pros and cons to having stuff pre-positioned, but the advantage of having it there is that you have it there. And with hubs, you know, if you set it up here and then another hub like 500 miles away, at least you know, at least if I can get to the other one that's 500 miles away, it's still closer to that one that I may have to go look for, have to go source it now. And especially from our particular context, you know, we're in the Caribbean. We're small, but we're lots and lots of islands and we're scattered. Our remit is really, really wide. So having pre-position and having a strategic hub could aid in the, you know, reduce duplication of efforts. And we talk about competition. It can reduce the competition because we could, you know, really lean on inter-agency collaboration and coordination. And as Dag had mentioned earlier, you know, with the communication, having LOAs and MOUs with various companies, you know, it can reduce a lot of that. And for a center, it always does not, it does not need to have a fixed location, you know. Right now, COVID has shown us that we can do a lot of things virtually. So once we can have, if we can have that virtually and just have a system plugged into it that we can see what is what and what is where, we can, we can, the advantages of having stuff pre-positioned, I think would outweigh, you know, the possibility of having it being destroyed in a particular event or something, but I think so. Dag, you were saying?
No, I just wanted to add on to that because you were talking about the hubs. And the important thing is to pre-position equipment in hubs so that we can utilize transportation together. And get things into the country or into the region together and not as different entities.
Yeah. And as you said, well, and transportation is usually a big thing for us because like I said, we're islands, so we're separated by water. So one of the strategic things that, you know, we really need to do is have the same LOAs and MOUs with strategic early companies, established companies that, as, you know, everybody, we're talking about standards. So we know we can have a reliable company that is not going to tell us, well, or promise to work with us and then when the opportunity or the time arises, we want to take payments from us or because, you know, they're like, oh, no, we have flights to put on. They're going to go that route instead of keeping their commitment. So all of the things that we've been discussing has, will feed into that, you know. Collaboration, reducing the competition, having standards, working with one another, ensuring all of our communications are up, are, you know, the trained personnel that we can easily get to bring those like, bring those critical lifelines back into order. And having a strategic hub, having a strategic movement coordination hub, especially a virtual hub that anybody or anyone could access. Because if it's in Barbados and something erupts in Barbados, you know, we could, so having something in Portugal would really, really support the coordination and movement of logistics.
Keisha, perfect. Thank you. I think I'm under a mandate to bring us to a close by about four minutes past the hour because the video that was due to start on the hour we had earlier. So I do have a little time for some closing comments, but I will edit down what I was intending to say. I'm grateful to all our speakers for the forthright and professional opinions that have been offered and shared today. And I think it's absolutely in the spirit of what ADR is about. And ADR simply being a manifestation of the cooperation and collaboration that we all try to engender across everything. Very grateful to the audience as well for their interest and focus and the questions that have been pinging in, which I've been attempting to weave into discussions as we've gone along. I've learned a lot today and it leaves me very confident that we are on track for a productive and inspiring ADR 2022. I was intending to pick out a few highlights from what has just been said, but I think time is going to be against me there. So forgive me if I'm not picking out very much. Sorry, my screen has just gone. Am I still audible? All right. Okay. Thanks, Keisha. What I think I'll pick out is our keynote speaker, I think, gave us a very clear view of Panama's vision of increased resilience and his particular focus on governance, especially linking the public and the private sectors. And I think that's a key thing, particularly given Panama's role as the key humanitarian logistic hub. I think there's so much that came out from everybody's speeches, but I think the messages from Dag, which was just three words and they were all prepare, is absolutely vital. And I thought his point about have a plan, exercise the plan and focus on local first responders was a very important one. Tim, an apologies for not knowing that it's now the Bureau for Humanitarian Assistance. So that's something else that I've learned today. But I think your points about telling our story consistently and listening to requirements at a local level in order to inform our own investment and to be able to convince our own decision makers to support that investment was really useful. As was your point about the need, you can't, as several people have said, you can't just have a plan and leave it there on the shelf. You've got, A, you've got to exercise it and your point about ongoing collaboration. Make sure you take the appropriate action when the government changes. Make sure you take the appropriate action when a key individual and executive director or a head of an agency changes. I thought that was incredibly useful. Roger, communication with and through local stakeholders in order to achieve the buy-in that we need, I thought was particularly important. And your focus on a sort of climate efficient response using sub-regional hubs to make it faster was one of the key messages. was one of the key messages. From Keisha, very interesting, we didn't probably touch as much on Covid as I would have liked to have done. But but Keisha, you gave us a very clear insight into how how Covid has changed decisions about deploying response teams safely, but still in a in a timely manner. And I think your point about in understanding local culture to inform your 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 decisions. And again, I'll say it for the third time because I think it's the key thing. We need to do things with people, not to them. Rogerio, you gave us some really great statistics on the scale of the challenge in the region and particularly the percentages affected by Covid, which in itself has become a driver of driving people into poverty. And as we know, poverty increases vulnerability to to disasters. So I felt I felt that was particularly insightful. And the need to respect diverse mandates, proposing solutions, not imposing them. That's all I'm going to pick out now, but I go back to my point about please send me in additional points and we will make sure we generate a truly valuable post event notes on this. So I I'd just like to end with a couple of observations. And these are partly based on on recent publications and and information from the U N's Office for Disaster Risk Reduction. But I think it just puts us in in focus, particularly in terms of the agenda for the next live meeting. U N D R R quote that seventy five percent more disasters have been reported in the last twenty years than in the twenty years before that. This is a bit of a generalisation, but overall fatalities other than the big, very tragic spectacular events are reducing because people like us are doing our jobs better, but the economic costs are increasing. So fortunately, in many disasters, more people are being saved who perhaps in the past would have died. But infrastructure costs and rebuilding costs are are overwhelming resources and existing budgets, which means that the need for critical infrastructure resilience is ever more important, particularly in areas such as ones that we've discussed today, transport networks for evacuating people and getting aid in, water and supplies for 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 health, communications, building standards, which we we haven't talked a great deal about today, but are are I know the subject of of another of G R V's conferences each year. Also resilience for health services and schools. We've talked about disaster risk governance today, and I think there is a consensus that it is in general too weak. Going back to U N D R R, they've done some analysis of the three probably most significant in terms of casualties disasters over the last decade or so, with five hundred thousand killed in the two thousand and four Indian Ocean tsunami, the two thousand and eight Cyclone Nargis in Myanmar and the twenty ten Haiti earthquake. But very clear after action assessments have effectively proved that an awful lot of those people could have been saved had there been the governance in place to enforce early warning systems, to enforce mandatory cyclone shelters or hurricane shelters in in our vocabulary and more robust and enforced building codes. The impact of disasters is, as I've said, being multiplied by poverty and inequality. Armed conflict is increasing vulnerability and can make disasters such as droughts more likely and more harmful. U N D R R finally, and I'm just cutting through because of time, but U N D R R have also identified some remarkable initiatives. And one of the questions which I I didn't have time to take from Ricardo Targa was about can we do more to encourage farmers to to use agriculture as a disaster mitigation measure, whether it's by planting trees? But U N D R have done some recent work, which I thought was fantastic, about how planting root and tuber crops like sweet potato and cassava, which can survive flooding and extreme weather events. So that when people emerge from shelters, there is food that hasn't been spoiled or destroyed, which they can both eat and sell to to supplement income at a at a critical time. And and I think it's exactly that sort of initiative that A D R as an event has encouraged. Not that I'm saying we we hand out sweet potato seeds. But the event continues to to encourage innovation, which I think is is the the vital thing. Discussing and challenging the broader themes that that increase vulnerability. My final line is purely going to be looking ahead to our goal. Our goal must be collaborative solutions, open dialogue and the delivery of better preparedness, response and recovery. I'm going to close there because we're smack on when we should be finishing. Thank you very much for your focus and your attention, the participation of 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 everybody who's involved. And please continue to participate in this event over the next couple of days with your follow on thoughts, follow on recommendations. Thank you very much.